Thank you, everyone. We will come back for our work session. It's March 27. And first, we have a motion. Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, I move to appoint Sharon Green to the Salt Creek Township Board. Sharon is a member or is a resident of Salt Creek and has willingly offered to devote her time to this.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Cockrell, did you want to add anything?
I thought I would give a little bit of background as to why it's here because typically these things are handled in different ways. This is for the Township Board and was it Salt Creek? Salt Creek Township Board. We had actually looked at a Commissioner decision probably a year ago whereas because what had happened is they had two people resign and then from the Township Board and then they had one vacancy. Those two people were from different parties. And so the first time it came to you guys was to determine which one was going to be the one that was going to be the primary so that the town so that the party chair could make a determination and caucus and appoint someone and they could go through the caucus process. That didn't happen. I think the other party, it also didn't happen. And so now we've got truly to the point where we're going to work with the statute that we thought we were working on at the beginning where now it's you guys get to make an appointment and that appointment will be until the next election. So it's this is almost the second time we've looked at this issue. So I just thought that that was important. You should have all received in the mail a notice for this and it was also published.
Great. All right, thank you. And I will just note for the record that the trustee and Ms. Green were here earlier and they waited patiently and this got dropped off our agenda somehow. So I'm grateful for their patience and appreciate them willingness and the willingness to serve especially. So with that, do we take public comment on this, Mr. Cockrell?
Typically, you don't on appointments and this is an appointment.
Okay, great. Just want to make sure we're following the rules.
And this is this should go through the through December 31 of 2026, I believe.
Yeah, that's the term. Yes, great, thank you. All right, with that, all those in favor of this appointment to the Board of Advisors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. All right, thank you so much. We are moving up item 4C, correct, to our next item. This is a special noise permit. Either the noise is special or the permit is special.
Or the occasion is special.
I like that, too. All right.
So do we need a motion?
I would, yeah, let's go ahead and do a motion. Thank you.
I move that we allow for a special noise permit for Paula McDevitt and it's June, but I don't know the exact date in 2024. But do you know the?
We need a second. Thank you.
Ms. McDevitt is going to have a wedding on her property on June 15 of this year and she has asked for an exception to allow for noise to extend past the 10:00 p.m. guideline. She has already reached out to her neighbors and they're all in agreement with this proposal. And so Mr. Cockrell had created for us, I'm going to say, a permit that allows me to execute on your behalf. And we will give a copy to Ms. McDevitt and then I think we'll also give one to our Sheriff's Department and maybe send one to the dispatch.
Great. That sounds like a good plan. Ms. McDevitt, did you have anything you wanted to add? Thank you for your patience today.
Oh, gosh, thank you. Good afternoon, County Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to be part of the process and the meeting was very interesting, so no worries there. But yeah, I would like just to thank staff, Angie, and the legal department for ushering my permit through and to get it on the agenda today. We are busy in the planning, but yes, I have visited all of our neighbors and they're all very excited for us. So thank you for supporting this and we're counting down the days. I believe we're under 90 days is my the bride-to-be reminds me, so just thank you very much. We really, really appreciate it.
Excellent, thank you so much. The puns are flying. We talked about ushering this through. This is a proposal. So this is for June 15, 2024, just to be clear for the public on Rogers Road. And thank you for doing this. I appreciate thoughtful neighbors like you who have gone the extra mile to make sure that, you know, that you're doing things right. So we appreciate that and I'm glad you enjoyed our meeting today, so thank you. All right, so with that, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Okay, all those in favor of approving the McDevitt special noise permit signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. That's what you were waiting for.
And I hope you have good weather.
Yes, good weather. Beautiful, beautiful event, wonderful marriage.
No cicadas.
All right, we see we have we'll go back up to number one. This is ordinance 2024-17. This is the Hopkins rezone. Ms. Krosilius, can you tell us all about this?
Yes, good morning. I just wanted to go over this briefly for you. So this is a rezone request from Agricultural Rural Reserve to suburban residential. So I'm just going to kind of really quickly go through my slides because images are helpful in this case. As Commissioner Thomas knows, I have made some tweaks, so hopefully it's a little more clear this time. So we are looking at a property in Clear Creek Township at 7.1 acres. It's 7540 South Old State Road 37. The property is we are looking at for the rezone, we are looking at one lot of record, but we the intent of this rezone is to allow the property owners to do an administrative type E subdivision, which is where you take legal lots of record that exist and just adjust the boundaries. So right now, the petition site is split zone suburban residential and Agar R, but they've already filed an administrative subdivision and the design that they really desire for one of the lots is not doable with split zoning. So I'm going to jump. Here is the proposed configuration and this is with current zoning, so we are going to look at this lot two here. The, let's see, so this purple lot right here over aerial image, this is the shape of the lot they want to make. And with the split zoning, it's not meeting the ordinance. And so in order to do this shape of lot, they would have to rezone up 0.62 acres from Agar R to SR. So that's the rezone request. This administrative subdivision includes three lots, so I do have examples of that, but this is the request in the area that we're looking at. This is the proposed lot line shift with the rezone. The, let me go down here. So with our the staff recommendation and with planned commissions, planned commission sent a favorable recommendation to the commissioners. With our conditions, just slightly tweaked, but one of the conditions is that this rezone is conditional upon recording this administrative subdivision. So if the administrative subdivision falls apart for some reason, this rezone won't go through. So it would be together done required to be done together. So couple of examples, these are the three lots that we're looking at for the administrative subdivision that they're trying to complete. Again, just simplified versions. This is the area of issue on Lot Two that would not allow them to make this lot line shift. And so what they're proposing here is that Lot Two gets that 0.62 acres from Ag to SR. We do see some areas that we do see are split zoned, the farthest right bubble, the small strip of Agar R, that's not involved in this petition, but I just wanted to point out that there this would create one additional area of split zone, which is the ER and SR, the yellow and the orange to the north. We plan to address these areas of split zoning under the CDO. So it's increasing a little bit, but we expect to kind of fix and clean up this area under the CDO anyways. So yeah, planning commission submitted recommended a favorable recommendation with the conditions, and I'll pull those up real quick, that they receive approved right-of-way activity permits from the Monroe County Highway Department as needed. There's some back and forth currently with the Highway Department and the petitioner as to the three driveways of the three lots under the administrative subdivision. Planning and the petitioner, you know, believes that they can work this out kind of separately from the rezone. So either way, those right-of-way activity permits are required and they're going to get them. So just another condition that they do follow through and receive the permits that are required. And then the second condition is that they record so fully complete the administrative subdivision that they filed, petition number SAD 243. Does anybody have questions?
My colleagues have any questions?
When this is brought back to us, could you make sure that the recommendation or the certification, whether from Ms. Jellin, is not upside down in our packet?
Yes, I noticed that.
I'm talented, but not that talented, okay? You know.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Any comments, questions?
Not at this time.
Yeah, this is an incredibly confusing yet yet not confusing once you hear it explained petition. And so I think the split zoning is not something we like to do, but it's clearly something that we hope will get addressed this year where the CDO is finally hopefully done. So that will be a short-term consequence, but I still think it's 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 still it still works. So I appreciate the explanation, Ms. Krosilius. So when do we want to hear this particular item? Would you like to hear it on April 10? Or is there? Is it okay? All right, how about April 10 for you, Ms. Krosilius?
That should work.
Great, excellent. Let's get that on our agenda. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Next, we have FAA grants regarding the airport. Mr. Cockrell?
Yeah. Yeah, I spoke with Carlos and I think he is at a he has a conflict right now and so I was hoping we could move this to the end of the agenda. And if he's back, great. If not, I think Amy from the airport can go through it, but I think he really wanted to be the presenter.
Okay, great, we'll do that. Okay, Ms. Gregory was here and is not here now.
I told her I had no problem handling this one.
Oh, good.
And I also have no trouble handling the number five, the legal department one. This is there is new state code that allows for us to kind of prepay some things under certain circumstances, one of them. And in this case, what we're talking about is the IRA vehicle. That's part of the grant and part of the opioid funding. It's an expensive vehicle and like a lot of people, they want a down payment and they're going to build it out and then you're going to get it. This went through the county council last night, which is required under the statute to see these things where we are going to make a prepayment, I think of approximately half the vehicle value.
It's $124,000 or something, which is less than the other component that adds the bond requirement.
Yeah. So so this is just to kind of inform you that the county council approved that last night. It's not clear in state code why it's only the county council, so we think that it's a good idea when we do these things that we let you guys know at a work session that it's going that it's happening. So but this is for that vehicle that we've all talked about and we've got funding appropriated for.
And I can elaborate a little bit in the sense that this new statute indicates that if the amount of the pre-purchase, if you will, is $150,000 or more, then not only do we have to have the council's approval, but at that point in time, there is a surety bond that becomes an issue. And so this doesn't hit that trigger, but just kind of bringing this up to you because it may come be an issue for us at some point in the future. We've already reached out to our insurance provider to kind of see where that's going to fall. So just kind of giving you the full background on that.
All right, thank you. See, my colleagues have any comments?
No.
Okay, so do we do we need a motion on this item? I believe we do.
I think it's just your informational for you.
Oh, okay.
Because I, again, I don't think it's requires your approval. It requires the council's approval, but we wanted to we know that this is one, it's a project that you guys are very interested in and two, it's a new avenue for these kind of issues. And so we think it's important that, at least for the first one, we make sure everybody's in the loop and we can determine how to do this in the future.
Okay, great, so we don't need a motion or a vote. So let's move on to item 4A and B. That would be you.
Thank you, sorry. And actually, my items A and B, I'm striking, however, I do have a D, if you will, that just came through this morning from the Health Department. They received an amendment to their Title 10 grant services agreement. And so since it's just an amendment and the state is requiring confirmation of this to be signed and presented to them by the 31st of this month, I thought I'd go ahead and present it to you. It provides them with an additional $50,000. So it's just it's just in addition to a currently existing grant that they have received and um.
I'm going to I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the amendment to the Title 10 grant and the amount of $50,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment to Title 10 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. And did you have anything else? Are you bringing back the other items?
At a later date.
Okay.
There was problems with the contract, both Mr. Cockrell and I made changes and sent it back.
Item five?
Yes, this is a.
Microphone, thank you.
Sorry, this is amending an agreement and I'm working on getting there with for the People and Animal Learning Services. Essentially, our prior agreement had a certification in it that was required. And so we are adding a second certification to that, which reflects they had a person leave who had that certification, but they have other similar certifications in place. And I'm trying to find the actual language where it was changed. But it but it is, I think the new one is a certified, let's see. It is a still a nationally certified accreditation for equine and therapy, mental health therapy. So it's just a different certification that the person has than what was initially in the contract. And so we're just adding that. I think it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Equine Specialist in Mental Health and Learning, ESHML.
And it says and/or certified therapeutic riding instructor.
Right. Okay, great. Do you want to make a motion?
I move approval of the of amending the MOU between Monroe County Circuit Court Probation Department and People and Animals Learning Services as stated in our agenda.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any comments on this? Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. I see none. All those in favor of amending the MOU between Monroe County Probation and People and Animal Learning Services signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Mr. Kreider, Fleet and Buildings. This is related to Nature's Way Landscaping Services for County Buildings.
Hello, Commissioners. Thanks for seeing me on this. This request is to approve the proposal submitted by Nature's Way, Inc. in the amount of $38,485.70 to provide landscaping maintenance services at multiple county facilities for the 2024 spring-through-fall season. Those facilities are the Courthouse, Health, Fiscus Johnson, and Showers Buildings. The scope of work includes spring bed cleanup and mulching, seasonal plant rotation, monthly weed control and plant maintenance, fall bed cleanup, and long leaf removal. This is there's some updates from the 2023 contract. In 2024, those updates include landscape maintenance on the west side of the Showers Building and native plants addition on the southwest corner of the Courthouse.
Ah, okay.
What do we have on the west side of the Showers Building?
We have we had that that side of the building tuck pointed several years ago and we did a plant installation and it's various shrubs and that kind of thing and they need some help. Yeah.
I do. And and this does not include the parking garage wall?
No.
Because we're going to still have that group that installed the wall?
Yes.
Provide the flat because they did such a great job. Yeah, live wall.
Live wall.
Out of Michigan, yep. Just reading through it. And then the same question about ensuring that we're using appropriate applications and avoiding.
So I spoke with them, actually, after the meeting. And so there is fertilizer that's used for the plants. However, they they will not use any type of pesticide or that type of thing. He said that there could be a situation where if we have a variety of plant that has some type of disease that we need to address, that would be a conversation that we would have with them. Now, we haven't had that situation arise with them, you know, in our past dealings, but I think it'd be something that we would discuss first. They're not just going to go start spraying and that kind of thing.
Yeah. You okay with that?
Yeah, I'm.
Turn your mic on. Sorry.
Yes, I in general, it sounds really good to me. I, of course, the use of herbicides does affect water quality, which is something that I think we should all be paying a bit more. I'm sorry, I didn't mean herbicides, I meant fertilizers, which is something that we should all be a bit more careful about. And I'm also very pleased to see the new landscaping for the southwest corner. Baptisia is a beautiful shrub that will look good from early spring to fall and the black-eyed Susans will be really nice there. It's a good choice of plants.
Good. We consulted the folks that do all the good work on the Hoosier, the native plant bed on the north end there and those were their recommendations and I passed those along and we're going to make it happen.
Sounds good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. So is this something you want us to vote on today because of getting that cleanup going and moving forward for the spring?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Let me get back up to.
Yep.
I was going through the pages on all this.
Yeah.
Yes, so I move approval of contract with Nature's Way Landscaping Services. Fund name, County General Service Contracts, Fund Number 1,000, in an amount of $38,485.70. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Nature's Way contract signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Cockrell, we can either, I know Ms. Garst is on Teams, we could either deal with the other contract you brought regarding North Park or we could deal with the airport. It's entirely up to you.
Well, I don't think that the contract will take very long because I think it's just kind of a continuation. So why don't we just do that and then we'll end with the with the fantastic presentation from the airport.
Great, thank you. All right. Okay, tell us about this contract, please.
Well, this contract is similar to contracts we've done whenever we've looked at any property. This is for the preliminary geotechnical engineering exploration of the North Park site. It includes 15 borings and six rock cores in the project. We worked with DLZ to get the appropriate placement for these and so and it is going to be paid from Fund 4816 and it's for an amount of $15,200.
It's with Vet Environmental again?
This is with Patriot Engineering.
Oh, Patriot.
This is the Geotech.
This is the Patriot one.
The Vet item was approved last week.
Right, but yeah, I forgot about Patriot.
So this is and I was going to put it on next week, but I didn't want to delay it two weeks.
Yeah, we don't want to delay.
So that's why I'm walking it on last second.
And that's Fund 4816 is the ban?
It's the edit ban fund, yes.
You got it all? Look at yours.
I think so. I move approval of the contract with Patriot Geotech for preliminary geotech investigation of the North Park properties. This will be fund name, edit ban, fund number 4816, in an amount of $15,200. Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Thank you for bringing this forward, Mr. Cockrell. And there's nobody left here in Nat U Hill, so if there's any comments from the public, please raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Geotech contract with Patriot for North Park signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. And yes, we're at the airport. I don't know who wants to start. This is originally on our agenda, our regular agenda, so I read that part packet anyway. But who would like to start?
I think it's Amy and if Carlos is back, their show, so I think.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, good afternoon. Carlos really wanted to do this, but he's at another important meeting, so I do have a little bit of a thing to read here. So as a cornerstone of connectivity for Bloomington and beyond, I'm here to discuss a pivotal advancement for our facility, the commissioning of a new FAA master plan study. This comprehensive plan is not merely a document, it's a strategic blueprint designed to guide the airport's growth, safety, and operational efficiency in alignment with contemporary aviation demands and future projections for decades to come. The essence of this master plan study is multifaceted. Firstly, it aims to thoroughly inventory our current assets and operations, assessing everything from airside and landside facilities. everything from airside and landside facilities to environmental resources. This foundational analysis is crucial for identifying areas that require enhancement or expansion to accommodate future aviation activity, which the study will forecast precisely. Moreover, the plan will rigorously evaluate facility requirements, say that three times fast, against FAA design standards, ensuring our infrastructure meets current demands and is poised to adapt to future aviation trends. This includes assessing the functionality of our terminal for present and future needs, ensuring we can offer an optimal experience for passengers and operators alike. Central to the plan is developing a dynamic airport layout plan, which we'll refer to as ALP, a critical component that will be updated to reflect new developments, potential expansions, and improvements. Once approved by the FAA, this ALP becomes the cornerstone for future funding and development initiatives, ensuring our project remains eligible for federal airport improvement program grants. The master plan also encompasses environmental considerations, ensuring our growth is sustainable and harmonious with our surroundings. It will set forth a clear, actionable, 20-year capital improvement plan detailing how we intend to fund and implement the identified improvements. This plan is not just about infrastructure, it's about readiness for emerging aviation technologies, enhancing our operational efficiency, and most importantly, ensuring the safety of our facilities and the people we serve. It's about laying a solid foundation for the Monroe County Airport to continue being a key economic driver and a gateway to our community. Given the total project cost of $570,770, with 90% covered by the FAA, which is, amounts $513,693, and 5% by the state at $28,538, our local contribution is $28,539. This investment from Monroe County unlocks significant federal and state funding, amplifying our commitment to a premier airport facility. I request the Monroe County Commissioners to support this essential funding, showcasing our shared vision for a connected and thriving community. And I thank you for your consideration and your support.
Can I tag team onto this?
Please.
And the reason I'm doing, doing that is because they have requested this, this 5% comes from the Cumulative Capital Development Fund, and in actuality, it has already been appropriated. I had talked with Carlos last year, so we had anticipated this coming. We just didn't have a formal process in place in order to ensure that you knew what was going on with your funds. So that's, that's my tag team to this issue.
Okay. But, but we still have to approve this because it's a grant? We don't have to approve this because it's a grant?
They, the Federal Aviation Commissioners have the full authority to approve this. I believe that our auditor would like for you to approve the, the use of the 28,000.
But I'm a little confused, does it come out of cumulative capital, or does it come out of airport infrastructure?
Comes out of cumulative, the 28,000 is purely out of cumulative capital. And what happens is we will have to do a transfer into their fund.
Right. Because that's where the grant's going.
Yeah.
Correct. The other fund is where the grant's going.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Trying to.
Yep. So we'll, this is very exciting. I, I did read through this. It's, it's really great that this is part of the infrastructure, federal infrastructure money that's coming, and it's a great local use for that. So let's go ahead and have a motion, and then we'll take comments and questions.
I move approval of the Federal Aviation Administration Grant Project 3-18-0006-042-2024, the Airport Master Plan Study. This will be fund name, cumulative capital, fund number 1,000, in an amount of $28,539. Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Thank you, Commissioner Githens, for getting that out. Good for you. So, so we have a motion and a second, so go ahead and take questions. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, and this may not really be a fair question for you. It may be someone else who could answer it more easily. But we are aware of the fact that the airport has some pretty challenging and difficult drainage situations. Do you know if this grant will look into the drainage in the area and that kind of thing? I believe a CAR study is needed and some things like that. Is any of that included?
Um, I, go ahead, Jeff.
I might be, we're having all that looked at currently. We have a, a contract with the WOLPER to look at the drainage on the current site, as well as how it affects the region. And I think, and, and we are paying for that through our ARPA funding. And so I think we will have all that prior, I think that'll be incorporated into the plan. But I don't, but since we're already studying it, we, it won't, I don't think we'll re-study it.
Oh, yeah. Right. I think it only needs to be studied once.
Commissioner Githens, questions?
Well, I attended a public meeting about some of this that Carlos present, where Carlos presented, and I, I, this is exciting. If we can get this into place, it, it'll enhance the airport, but also it is good for business.
Great, great. Regional economic development, so it's a very good thing. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item from teams. Raise your hand on teams if you'd like to offer a comment. All right, seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the local contribution to the Federal Aviation Administration Grant Project on the Airport Master Plan Study signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. All right. Do we have anything else for? I'm just noticing that my microphone says Delegate 10, and it says it in, in Russian. Mine's in Cyrillic.
I just wanted to say thank you for your support.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
It's just for you in particular.
I guess so.
You're the only one who can read it.
Deli got. Anything else? All right. Are we, are we good? Can we adjourn? Okay. I'm just, everybody is making these, you know, eye motions, like, there's something coming. All right. Thank you, everyone. Be safe, and we are adjourned. Our next meeting is April 10th, and I'll note for the record, the reason we have a work session is for things that come up at the last minute. And no, if they were known way in advance, they wouldn't be on a work session agenda, they'd be on the regular agenda. So I'm not sure why, why that's confusing for, for folks, but, but that's why, and we also always hear planning items at our work sessions so that we can determine questions, field questions, provide comments, and then hear the item at a future regular meeting, but we put that on our schedule during the work session. So with that, we are adjourned. Everybody be safe.